Can you hear me? So with this ordinance, with this proposal, we've already sent this off to recommendation to full council and also we have full support. We sent off a recommendation for full support of the approved pay raises in the salary ordinance. So this is the, because the CBA would address, has addressed those raises there for public safety in proposal number nine as far as addressing to the salary ordinance. But it's already been recommended to full council for us to vote. I don't have any other, I don't have any objections according to the CBA. I don't know if anybody else says. So that was a null issue there. So there's nothing to discuss there on proposal, there's nothing to discuss in proposal number nine.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion for proposal number 10? An ordinance fixing salaries of appointed officers and employees of the city of Lawrence, Indiana for the year 2026. Any further discussion there?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm going to push the thing. So I think what proposal number 10 was, would this affect us? Would we have to change this? I guess my question for this would be for the controller that if the council chose to support a pay raise, a 3% raise on the civil side and funded that, would we have to make changes to the salary ordinance to make that work? Would we have to reflect the salaries up 3% to that, to change, to be able to change that? So the question I guess I have too is if we don't change the funding but we change the ordinance, does that, does that put us, put the council in a better position to get what we're looking for?
So make sure I'm clear, you're asking if you could do a raise in 2026?
Right, so if we're looking at the civil side, if no matter what we do far as budget way, I understand it is, it is the administration's prerogative to manage that budget. But if we change the salary ordinance to up the civil salaries up 3%, would that in turn mandate the city to grant the raises?
You would need an additional appropriation which would need to be approved by the mayor.
So we still would have to have.
Because there are no pay raises included in 2026.
And we cannot, we cannot increase the amount on the budget. We can only decrease the published budget. Right? Correct? Okay, want to make sure that that is clear for all councillors here when we're addressing, trying to give a civil side pay raise. So at this point to give a pay raise, we would have to increase the salary ordinance which we can do here.
And request an additional appropriation.
So if we increase, so we increase the salary ordinance, that is making our intentions clear. Okay.
The additional appropriation we need to go in.
For the 2026 budget because you don't, we don't have any raises outside of what they're currently getting paid right now.
Right.
And we can't increase the amount.
So do we, do we make that request this year for next year or we have to wait to 26?
You would have to make it for next year.
In January.
In January?
Yeah. But we could change the salary ordinance.
Right, this year.
Now.
For next year.
For next year.
For next year.
Right.
Right.
Okay, and that's the discussion on the radio. Yeah, okay.
We gotta do it right.
All right.
Yes.
I want to speak on that as well and just for a point of clarity.
Who are you?
Thank you, Madam Chair, I'm Jeanette Jackson, HR Director here with the city. Just for a point of clarity for the salary ordinance, just so you know, this, if the salary ordinance is changed for the civilians, this does not mean that every employee is given a 3%. That is what you all recommend because of some of the things that are already listed in our employee handbook. Increases should be based on performance as well as what's already written within our handbook. In terms of if there are individuals who may be on any PIPs or anything like that, there are things that we can do in regards to such. Also for that ending salary date, not every employee is at that range, but there are some who are already at that cap, just so you're aware.
So, right, so we have to increase the, for them?
Yes.
But then there's others that it really didn't matter.
Correct.
But we gotta make sure that the other one's straight. And then you're saying that there's never no blanket 3% raises across the city not based upon.
That has been the precedence in the past.
Okay.
So if that is what the council recommends, that is what we can give up to.
Okay, say that twice now for me. All right, let me try to understand that.
The precedent in the past is that you always give a, the council has approved for you all to give an increase.
Right, so when did the policies change happen that you just stated?
It's, it's never been a policy change, you can do that, that's just been the precedence of such.
The precedent is to give a 3% across the board.
Mm-hmm. Yes, but however, we want to make sure that everything is running, our policy is still moving forward.
That's what I'm saying, the policy changed then.
No, the policy is.
Oh, it just wasn't used?
Yes, because it's been given across the board and yes, we do want to make sure all of our employees are paid according to what the cost of living and what they should be valued for, what they're currently receiving.
That was my next warning, if we call this a cost of living change and not a merit raise, not a performance raise, right, so we do a cost of living from up here. Because we don't know what people's performance are, right?
Correct.
And then you guys get to choose their performance in that range.
Absolutely.
Right, so we just want to give 3% on the bottom or 3% on the top? You decide if the person's on the bottom or the top.
Correct.
That's what we've always done, we don't get involved in the.
Just want to put that point of clarity for you all to know.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion on that? That's very informative.
So have this, has this been recommended? I don't think a motion has been made to full council regarding the salary ordinance. That has been recommended as well already? All right.
Moving right along. New business. I just want to make a statement before we go further into this. It has been this council's goal from the very beginning to put an increase in place for the civilian employees. At no time had we talked about nor thought about nor considered anyone losing their position while we went through this process. Although we received the budget late, that was our goal and that's what we stuck with. We never changed. We never defunded a department to try to give out a raise. We never did that, that was never a conversation. I know you've read a lot of negative publicity about what we were doing, but that never happened and was never a consideration. Thank you. Anyone else before we move further? Okay. In order to give a raise, you have to make some changes. We created a chart and on the chart, of course, there's the hiring freeze that was stated by the mayor. And we did remove from the Lawrence Police Department three positions. We also removed from the billboards, $33,000 from the billboard. We also removed travel from the mayor's office. We also removed general consulting from the controller. And then that word "other" that kept popping up, we removed two other categories. It wasn't defined, it was just said "other" from the controller. So there were three removals from the controller's office. Human resources, we removed another, other column. And in human resources, we removed travel expenses. We made a total of $745,000 in removals. Our goal was 1.5 million. So you see, we had, we based on considerations as well. Anything else, councillors? Any department here would like to come forth and talk on the new business?
Curtis, good to speak, Chief of Police. I know that you said that you guys didn't make any cuts as it relates to public safety, but in those cuts you did take three positions away that were funded in 2025's budget. So those, that is taking funding away from the police department that we need to adequately protect our city and our citizens. I know I've made reference to this before, that if these cuts are made, there will be significant changes in which the way we do services for the city of Lawrence. I can't continue to have the men and women of this department take runs day in and day out when we know that we should be at 120 police officers. We're going backwards a decade. I don't think that's the wisest thing to do at this point, but considering everything that's happening in our, in our world and in our country and our city, we've had four police action shootings in the last year. And we're asking these officers to do more with less. I might seem upset, I am upset because this is in fact going behind and taking officers that we already had allocated in this budget. If you go back and look at 2025's budget, you are removing officers. When your initial numbers came out, you were looking at taking away 11 to 13 police officers or civilian staff. $1.1 million because your numbers are not correct as it relates to $420,000.
Oh, Chief, can we get the, we're using her numbers, so let, I mean, let's not get up here in front. We gave you time, right? And, you know, and you throw out stats and I'm gonna let you, we let you talk, but you can't go too far. You know, what you just said about 120 officers, and I'm saying this to you guys, I did the math. If Indianapolis did the 2.1, the 2.3, it would have 1,100 officers in their city and they got, they got five something. Also too with the numbers, we've got those numbers there from the, from working with the controller. We're not out here just trying to work by ourselves, Chief. And we've sat down and met with you individually several times.
I was at budget discussions.
And we've had, yeah.
Four showed up at the budget workshops.
Only four is allowed, Chief.
No.
We sat down and had meetings. Let him finish.
Let me get the record straight. Right after that meeting, I opened it up unless you guys didn't get it. I said, after your council meeting, I stayed after. Councilor Missouri showed up after the council meeting to have further discussions. I understand that you only can have so many people in one room at one time.
But other people took time off their day to have lunch with you and sit down and have further discussions. So don't say she laid after.
But you were in that meeting in the first one.
And then, yeah, and then, right. And then we sat down and had lunch for two hours.
I'm not saying that I was not available.
So don't act like we're not trying to work things out with you.
To come to my office to have.
You are our chief and we love you. We really do.
But what I'm saying is, is that at those numbers, that even at $420,000, that's still equivalent. Now you, I know you said that you speak with, you got with the controller to come up with those numbers, how you came with three. On average, it costs about $83,000 at the high end for a mayor police officer. $420,000 represents five.
Does that mean that she's wrong?
Well, I would give that to the controller's office. But I'm just letting you know that with those numbers, that's significant. I don't want to budge for one because we had in our budget for 2025, 68 police officers. Anything below that is taken away from the numbers that we had initially.
But Chief, you had it budgeted for 68 officers.
In 2025, yes.
And how many officers were working?
I'm sorry, can you clarify your question about work?
Okay, you had, you had the positions of 68. Were there 68 officers working?
Not in those positions because we are actually actively in a process right now to finish our last vacancies that was budgeted for this year.
Okay, so there were 65?
63, we have 63 right now in the books.
Okay, and then with what we have done, the decisions we made, you will have two more then, than you had last year? Am I doing my math correctly? You'll have 65?
Right, it'll be 65, but I'm just saying that we're going backwards from 68 as the budgeted number.
But it's not a real number.
It is a real number because it's been budgeted for 68. It hasn't, it hasn't.
But you don't have the bodies to fill those positions and that money can be used for other things.
As I've stated in previous meetings, that we are in a process to fill our vacancies. Unfortunately, we haven't met that criteria. If we take away three now, then it takes approximately a year to get an officer on the police department. So now we're taking it all the way back to 2027 and trying to fill vacancies.
What do you mean by in the process? Does that mean that there are three, an additional, three more?
There's 11 people in our current process right now.
Okay.
Going through the background phase, getting ready to go for psychological exams.
Okay, how many, I'm sorry?
There's 11.
11?
And so of that 11, they make it to the psychological exam and then we lose half of those people.
So then you'll have, then you'll have five.
So usually in our process, you start maybe with 100 people. You're gonna lose half of those people to physical agility, written exam and oral exams. And then as you go through the background, then you're gonna be shaving down a lot more from that point. Then when you go to psychological, you shave down more from there.
Are you saying then at, with the 11 in process right now, that you're gonna end up with, what, two more? That's total four?
No, I'm trying to get five, five out of that.
So half, so half is what you said, total of five more.
But I'm not even 100% sure we can even get those five.
And what's the most we've ever had on the, on the, on the fours?
67.
67?
Yes.
And, but currently in the last few years, when was that that we had 67? Do you know what year that was?
That was just last year in our process.
We had 67 last year?
Yes.
In the process?
No, we had 67 on the books.
Actual hires, what I'm interested in.
Right, and then we had people leave and then we had medical retirements or people.
What's the most you ever had a roll call?
67 is that number of, or 68.
Okay, and how long did we sustain the 67?
It didn't last long, that's what I'm saying.
And the city didn't burn down and blaze, did it?
I'm sorry?
But I'm saying, but crime is down. You've been doing, I mean, the city didn't fall.
I think that you're, you're trying to realize that. What, what I'm saying is that right now, we are overtaxing our staff. When we look at the numbers, we should at least for our city of our size, should have at least 120 police officers.
So every city in this state is half staff? Because you throw that out and I went around and did some research.
They're above more average than what we are right now.
Well, I sure like, because I was looking for that, Chief, I really was.
The standard of Indiana.
I was looking to see, because I don't want us behind nobody else, we're as good as anybody else.
Right now, so the state of Indiana's average is 2.3, FBI recommendations is 2.1.
What city has 2.3? Because I'm sure, been calling and looking. Nobody in central Indiana has it.
A lot of them are up there with their numbers. 80 some police officers and we're struggling to.
I sure liked for you to let us know who's hitting that 2.3 average, because I really was looking. I really.
State average. And if you guys seen our strategic plan that's in there, there was even a compromise even out of our strategic plan. We wanted to add five additional officers for each year so we can at least catch.
So can we also, Chief, you know, I want to be honest with you. I have so much respect for you and all the officers that work here, but we gotta talk about the real expenses, right? So we're talking about $700,000, $1.5 million, Chief. Let's talk about our new expenses that we have in the city. And I'm not belaboring saying that you had all to do with it, but we all in the room know that our city's car insurance, our, I mean, not car insurance, but our insurance.
My liability.
Our liability insurance has cost us now a million dollars a year. And you know that, and you know that you, you and your department had a lot to do with that. A lot of the policies that you've made had to do with that. So here's what I'm gonna say to you, and I was waiting and I'm gonna say it to you. My councillors don't even know this. If we haven't voted on anything, right? So I want to say to, not you, but the men and women that are outside on the streets that are doing the work, if we decide to, you know, grant you guys more help with officers, then there's gonna have to be a change in some other ways to recoup the money. So just know that there's more than one way to skin a cat because there's only so much money in the pipe. So if we support, I don't want you to be overworked. I talked to Chief and told me there's only six people on night shift, right? I've talked to old officers that told me you used to do four. I understand crime is more and I want you to have eight or 10, okay? But if we vote for that, we're really putting our city in a really, really bad shape in '27 and '28. And I've been on the council now for 10 years and I don't plan to go anywhere. So I plan to be here when the problems are here in '27 and '28. And for some of the folks that refused to change our pursuit policies in the past, some of the folks that decided not to change those policies is why we got a million dollar deal. And that came straight from the insurance agent himself. I asked him himself, did, just overnight, did we get here? We've been walking down this road a long time and so since you want to put it out there, you put us out on Facebook, you put us out on this, so I want to be honest. Hold on, Chief, I want to be honest where our expenses are. Also too, for many of the voters out here, SB 1 is real. Property tax increases, property tax went down and now we have to deal with cities all across the state to do less. I also ask all those that advocated in here in this room today, you should have known that SB 1 affects you the most because you are the biggest expense rightfully. So I also advocate, I also say as you come in here and you're advocating for your, for yourself here, I also encourage you to advocate for yourselves in the state house as well. Because if we had more, we would give you more. I ask that you advocate yourself with your city county councillors so that we can increase our public safety tax so that we could try to do more. We don't want a cut, and this ain't a cut. We don't want to not give you everything and we've tried. You got a 3% raise this year, you got a 30% perf increase this year, you got brand new tacos in the city, you got a, you got a what's it, so you got 5% increase over the last 10 years? We got you guys in parity. Nobody uses that word parity anymore. But when I first came on this council, you guys were underpaid and we got you up to parity now. And now all we're asking is that to give us some reprieve so that we could try to figure out how we move this city forward. The truth is, the city don't have a $1.5 million, but the city has a $5 million budget hole. We filled it with ARPA money from COVID 3.6 that we don't have anymore. We're also taxing your utility more now. So it's all out here, this is a committee meeting. So any suggestions, any ideas? I'm sure the controller and the rest of us out here, I personally would be more than happy to learn how we can cut. And also too, the folks on the civil side, they deserve a raise. They've skipped raises, they don't have a union. I've voted against raises for them in the past and today I refuse to do it again. And if that means you guys are gonna rail me out of town because I didn't give it to you and I gave it to the hardworking people at DPW, so be it. And this is a committee meeting, point of order. She granted you time in a committee meeting, this meeting is really for us. I ask for a point of order and a motion for adjournment.
Wait a minute, before we adjourn, I have, sorry, I have some questions, if you don't mind, Curtis. Chief, how many, something I haven't heard, how many reserve officers are on the street right now?
I believe we have right on 26 to 28.
Twenty, is that included with this, that is the 68 number?
That's a number totally separate and they're in different divisions of our department. So they, they work in operations, they also work in investigations, we also have people attached to the school.
So in a phone call that you and I had, I believe it was Tuesday, you just said just a minute ago that there's 63 officers currently.
Mayor police officers, yes.
But you told me Tuesday that two of them are in the academy.
That's part of this 63, yes, that's correct.
So we actually only have 61 on the street?
Yeah, if you want to, yeah, have it that way, yes.
Because if you're in the academy, you can't be a police officer until you graduate the academy.
They're already, they're already sworn in as mayor police officers. So they go through the academy, once they pass the academy, they come back here to go through field training.
I mean, is there, and here again, you're the police chief, I'm just sitting up here, but being the councilman, but I don't profess to know your business, but is it plausible that more reserve officers could be hired to fill this gap?
We've had reserve officer processes, but we should not, I don't think it should be customary for the police department to depend on, you know, civil volunteers to make up the difference of what we should already have.
But here again, like I said, I don't know, I don't know your, what it is you do. I mean, I know what you do, but not the day-to-day basis of it. But I would think that there are tasks that someone like a reserve officers could do that doesn't have the full training that, you know, these gentlemen back here have, that they could take, you know, some of this more mundane operations.
They're already working several voids each and every day so our officers can get off, so we can try to relieve some of our overtime. But we only can ask them to do so much in which we should be having the officers available to us that we should have as the core to our staff.
Well, like Councilor Giles said, you know, there's only so much money in the pot. And, and I totally am concerned with public safety as well. I mean, I, I fully agree with what Councilor Giles has said. But, you know, there's just so much money there is. And if, if your department gets more than some other departments are gonna have to get less.
It's about maintaining what we have on the books right now.
Well, it's more if that's all you have.
I mean, if it, if you.
I mean, I understand in the context of what you're speaking about, Council Wells, but I'm, I'm just saying that right now is budgeted for 68 this year in 2025. I didn't ask for any additional positions above and beyond that. One, and also inside of looking at how Senate Enroll Act 1 impacted the city. I didn't ask for anything above that, but we were also looking at ways and technology to kind of offset our numbers so that we wouldn't be spending all that additional money.
Take any compensation for COVID loss of the ARPA dollars. I agree with you, you were flat, but what I'm saying is, I'm the same guy that argued years ago that we were in the hole and we weren't using the ARPA money right. And so that's, and then it's gone and I knew once we were gone, we took the expenses here and then once it's gone, the same thing the city did during the, the Jessup, when we got that grant before Jessup came. It's the repeat, unless you're willing to make the tough choices, like we're all doing in our own families in tough times, what makes anybody in this room think that they are refrained from these tough times and, and have to do more with less?
We've been doing more with less at least in our department for years.
This is a hardworking city. I don't know anybody in Lawrence that just gets a whole lot of, of everything they want. We're a blue collar, hardworking city of people of grit and we know how to survive with less and, and know how to get the most out of what we have. And if our people are at the store with food stamps and I've watched the lines of Save-A-Lot line long as can be in this city, then I also know that the other people that live and work in here, they deserve a raise. And they do.
I never said that any civilians or anybody didn't deserve a raise. What I'm saying is, is that what we're trying to do is take away from public safety, which I.
I'm not trying to take nothing from y'all, man, stop saying that.
I mean, well, sure, it's through, making sure that we were made whole with our 68 police officers. We didn't ask for anything above that, we just, we asked to maintain.
You ain't changed a bit.
So you say you want to maintain, the, the mayor instituted a hiring freeze. You're saying you're currently at 62 officers.
63.
62, 63. You're wanting to get to 68, which means you would have to hire more officers. Are you saying that you do not answer to the mayor who has instituted a hiring freeze? Because if you were to need to hire those five officers, that would be hiring, so that would be going against her hiring.
The mayor never cut anything from public safety's budget. She kept it at 68, we remained at 68, there's been no difference in that. The budget right now is for 68, the budget going forward is for 68.
But if you can't use those funds to hire officers, then why would we not cut those funds?
The numbers for 2025 have been 68, it's been budgeted for 68. The numbers in 2026 are still 68.
But you can't hire those officers.
They're in the pipeline right now, it's a repeat.
So you're going against the mayor's hiring freeze. Is that not what you're saying?
I'm sorry, what'd you say?
You're saying that you are going to hire officers regardless of the mayor's hiring.
The mayor has said, the mayor has put forward a, a proposal that has 68 like she did now. So the anticipation is to remain at our 68 and not go above that. So if you want to look at it as a hiring freeze or whatever, above 68, then that's what that number should be. But there has been no recommendation or proposal for more than 68.
Hey, Chief, and this is, I do have another comment that we haven't talked about as far as maybe being inflated. When you talk about the cost of the 70 to the 140, are you counting in all the benefits for that officer as well?
Yes.
So 70, 82,000, that's counting the benefits, perf and all that?
And that's at the max, I'm sorry, we'll let them speak on that one then.
Okay, all right.
Can you come to the mic, please? Thank you.
I believe when you asked me for that information, we gave you the line items that included all of the costs associated with that officer and the 83 or 83.5 is pretty much the salaries and then all the rest is benefits, perf, medical. benefits, perf, uh, medical, clothing allowance, uh, HSA, uh, city contributions, Medicare.
The whole, what it really, the whole cost?
Yeah.
Right, thank you.
Chief, a couple of quick questions. One, back to the police officer, do you, do you have any police officers that are currently on uh, disability or a long term illness or?
On FMOL, yes, yes, we do.
How many?
I believe there's two right now.
Two? Do you get any idea when they're going to come back or?
Not this moment, they have up until twelve weeks to use for FMOL.
So that actually short handed you apparently like two more officers.
Yes.
Is it? I mean, is, and I hate to say this, but is it possible that these officers could just get permanent disability and uh, if they can't come back in any reasonable foreseeable future or?
I mean, if they're not fit for duty, they can't return back to full duty status if they're not fit for duty.
Let me ask you, I'm sorry, one one other quick question. We've been told that there's like twenty some brand new police cars sitting waiting to be eight four put into use.
There's twenty.
Twenty? And they're still sitting at the dealership or?
Yes, they are.
And where is the money budgeted for, is it in this, is it in this budget?
I can let the financial advisor, yes, it is in this budget, yes.
It is in this budget?
Yes, it is.
Well, let me ask you this, is it possible that these cars could not be purchased and the money be used to?
Those are two different funding categories.
Capital, they're using that out the general fund. But you, you're paying for, you're not using it out the general fund, you're using it out of.
They are not in the twenty twenty six budget.
They're in the twenty five budget? They're not budgeted at all. So you're saying there's another.
They're in C, they're, they are in CCD funds, yes, they are.
The Q cap?
Yes.
Right, which is capital fund, right? So when we up the Q cap guys for capital, we are using it to buy cars that's depreciating value, and it's not sustaining, where the Q cap could be used for other projects across the city that have longstanding value to the city.
Well, that's where I was going with that.
So when we proved the Q cap rate up, none of us with the intentions thought that we would buy cars that we trade off, like you say, high mileage every two to three years, but we would be.
We actually keep a vehicle in our inventory for seven years, and that's why we have cars that are out here. We have some of our vehicles are two thousand seven, we have two thousand elevens, thirteens.
Okay, so good, that's a good question. So when you use the Q cap to pay, right, that's a bond, right? It's just the accumulation of that fund.
It is accumulation of the um, Q cap development fund can only be utilized for capital purchases and expected.
Okay, so each, so will we be depleting that fund for to buy those cars for that year or the, because what's in that fund, like two thirty five or something like that?
Anyone who speaks, please come to the podium.
I'm sorry. So the, you know, if you, while she comes, if if you would, please, the the bigger issue, I think, what we're trying to get at is that we've making all our investments into the police department. Even with the dollars that we have, capital dollars that we have, that we could do other things with, you know, it's it's going to, it's going to the department. So when you're saying that we're not making that investment, we're defunding, it's like we're throwing everything we got there.
That's not necessarily true, but you know that we have a depleted actual um, you know.
And that's not our decision, the mayor's made an investment into public safety, and she's doing everything she can to fund public safety.
Over years, we don't have two thousand elevens, two thousand sevens, if nobody was investing in the police department. We still have these inside our inventory right now.
I understand, I'll talk about the money.
How much money is set aside in the Q cap for the cars?
That would be for the control.
In twenty twenty six, the expenditures are estimated at one point one million. Uh, we're beginning twenty twenty six with seven hundred and fifty seven thousand. Uh, so our expenditures with the revenue of one million, we're expected to spend one point one. By the end of twenty twenty six, we'll have six hundred thousand, six hundred sixty thousand.
After, after we buy the cars? Or is that before?
After all the expenditures.
After all the expenditures, about six hundred thousand left in the Q cap.
Well, I guess where I was born with.
Now I have a quick question, this is Councilor Chavis.
And this is in your budget binder in the front part of your book.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, um, quick question for the controller. She said after all the expenses, are the police cars fully budgeted out of the Q cap fund for twenty twenty six?
I think initially we were thinking about putting them in a bond, and I know that didn't happen. They were not in the twenty twenty five budget. But I think what we've done is actually put those expected expenditures in the Q fund for twenty twenty six at one point one.
So that means, so that means it would deplete it?
Well, by the end of twenty twenty six, you'll have six hundred sixty thousand, based on those expenditures.
So so how much are twenty cars, fully, I'm talking about fully equipped?
Looks like it's twenty four cars, my understanding.
She said twenty.
It is not.
So how much are twenty four cars fully equipped? With all this special equipment and everything?
Five seventy, five hundred and seventy thousand.
For twenty of them?
So it. Because I thought these tacos were like fifty, fifty one thousand dollars or something.
Yeah, that seems awful, chief.
So the math is not adding up, and then that's not even with all this.
It's a lease.
It's a lease, so again.
So now we're going back to leasing after we, we, there was a case last year that it made more sense to buy them, this year, now we're going back to leasing them?
Well, we're showing, the purpose we're showing to the community is, we're fully invested in the public safety. And we're doing everything that we can by by hook or crook to get them. And they're getting everything, not everything, but they're getting mostly all the things, and this, it's not us, it's 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 the, I want to give the mayor the credit, she is fully invested in public safety. She truly is, and we're just trying to find, and some of this hole is before, right? Because the five million dollars, is that a fake number? That we had to find in our revenue, that we had to go get five million dollars out of our reserve? A part of it out of our reserve, and part of it on taxing our utilities? Those are the facts.
And and let's let's also put on the record that even with the proposed cuts that we have made, um.
We're still short.
Still doesn't get us where we need to be with giving civilian pay raises, we're still short. So we need, we we have to try to find more. We can't go backwards in what we've identified, we have to try to find more.
Or we eat into our reserves, and then at twenty eight, we're we're busted. I know, that's how we've been in our back room, quiet, tough choices. And that's why I asked that everybody come, see the tough choices.
What does busted mean? Can someone, in layman's terms, I don't know what busted, tell me what busted would mean. What would happen in twenty twenty eight if we run out of money? In in order to to continue doing.
We'll keep running, but I'm saying we'll have no cash reserves, we won't be able to bond, we won't be able to make any capital projects. If something, if something, we won't be able to, you know, we'll be just paying payroll. Which is pretty much what we're doing today. Because our expenditures are over than our revenue.
Know what what they have to say.
So then we got to come back to you guys and maybe ask you for a local tax increase.
So our revenues would be at fifteen percent at at the end of twenty twenty six.
Six, no, twenty eight, and then if you take the same budget, it's another five percent off. So then you're at ten, and then you're at five, and when you're at the five threshold, you can't do nothing, because now you don't have, you don't have two, three, two to three months of expenditures. So this is why we're making the cuts.
My I, my question is, my question is, what happens when we run out of that reserve like that?
You had junk bond status.
Well, you need to, if we don't have money.
I'm looking, I want, I want to, I want to hear from you guys.
Well, basically, if you don't have the money to operate, the DLG would be reluctant.
What is the DLG?
Department of Lo- uh, Local Government.
Okay.
So they wouldn't, they wouldn't give you the appropriation that you would need to operate.
And if we don't have the appropriations, then what happens next?
We only have reserves for two to three months. Basically, they're saying, you're asking for money to, for operations for a whole year. And so they're saying that your money, the money that you would be bringing in would not be enough to cover all of your expenses.
And please make no mistake, I'm not trying to be facetious or anything, like, I'm just trying to get a general understanding as to what happens if we run out of money. I want the public to understand what happens if we run out of money, so I want you guys to explain, please.
Well, and Council Freeman, you were here when we were out of money.
I'm sorry?
Council Freeman's been here when we were out of money.
I was not.
No, I'm saying, she wasn't either, but I'm saying, the expert to how to navigate out of not having no money is right there.
Right, but I'm asking these people right here, please, continue.
Well, I'm, I think it would be like anybody else, if you don't have any money, you can't pay the bills.
But we've been here when we couldn't barely pay the bills, that's what I'm trying to tell you is, we've been here, and some people in this room have been here, they remember.
What happened when 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 it, when?
We were at junk bond status, we had no reserves.
I wasn't here, so.
Who can explain to me what 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 happens when 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 we go through that? What is junk bond standards? I'm I'm asking what scenario, what is the scenario that happens?
If in the future, Tim Berry with Crowe. Uh, if in the future you did not have adequate revenues to fund a budget, uh, the Department of Local Government Finance would return that budget back to you with mandated cuts. And you would, as the council, would have to make those cuts to the budget.
Thank you.
And your rating goes down too.
Correct.
I want that to, very important.
And when your rating goes down, you can't get bonds.
It's like living in a house with no, with no, bad credit high end.
It's like five fifty credit?
Yeah, living with five fifty credit.
Could you give us a, just a couple, two or three examples of what cuts they would, in your mind, that they would ask to have done, would it be uh?
They would tell you a dollar amount that you would need to cut your budget.
So they wouldn't, they wouldn't come in and say, you need to cut this, this and this, and give you a dollar amount?
Right.
They will give you a dollar amount by which you would be forced to cut your budget. They will approve a budget up to a certain amount, and they would require you to make those changes.
The last time that happened, they cut EMTs and stuff, remember?
What happened last time, I'm sorry?
We cut EMTs and 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 we closed down firehouses.
And you closed down fire.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, Shra was in that, that's what I'm saying.
And that's really the point I was trying to make, the public needs to understand what we're concerned about. And it's real simple, real simple. We've been going over and above for years. What we uh, 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 can afford, three, what, three to five million dollars every year? That's that's sustainable, that that is sustainable for about three years. And it's unfortunate that the mayor is forcing us or trying to get us to make the cuts that that she should have made.
Well, they made some cuts, in all fairness, I want to just, in all fairness.
What we're making is is crumbs.
I just know, but department heads, in all fairness, department heads made significant cuts from what I understand, and I appreciate their efforts, and they did real hard to keep their budgets flat, and I don't want to 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 for that to not to be misinterpreted. And I want to make sure that as a council, we did take that in consideration about flat. But I'm just saying that as a person, you can look at the tape, I thought flat was too much three years ago, you know what I mean? I might, you know, so so here we are today, and I just wanted to make sure that, you know, no.
I I, I'm not, I'm not really a fan of trying to cut, you know, police services, I I'll just say that out loud, I just, we got to find a better way.
Yeah, I do want to initially say, I think we had explained that um, our original deficit was seven point five million.
Right.
And then we got it down to three point five.
That's a lot of work, and I want to, those folks for, no, seriously, that's, I mean, that's serious, I really, really want to commend folks. The fire department didn't, no, no, chief, I'm not coming down, but I'm saying, fire department, you know, we've had relationships over the years, where I've been hard on you guys, you guys kept a flat budget, very ed- you know, and I think that all of us on the council also want to give you guys credit for the grants that you guys just got. And and we're not saying, chief, that you're not working hard to cut, we know you guys, we know you guys are, we know you are. Right, you know, we know, we we know, we know you are, but I'm just saying, different departments have had different times, that they've been more under the fire. And for those of us that's been following uh, following us over the years, that's just being honest over the ten years, you know? I I'm sorry, I don't have any.
All right, thank you, thank you, guys, it's very informative. And next on the agenda of the business, we don't have any media adjourned, thank you.